I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please? Cam?
Okay. Good evening, Chairman. Today is Tuesday, April 2nd in the year 2024. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on March 27th of this year. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
Thank you, Cam. Before we do roll call, Santo, do you want to swear in our newest commissioner? Our newest former commissioner?
Thanks. Okay. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Darlene Green.
I Darlene Green.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
And impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties as a Class II member.
Perform all duties as a Class II member.
Of the Jersey City Planning Board.
Of the Jersey City Planning Board.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, David. Can you just sign this?
Okay. With that said, Cam, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Dr. Desai. Commissioner Green.
Present.
Commissioner Torres.
Present.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Here.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
Okay. We have six commissioners present. We have a quorum.
Okay. Thank you. Could we swear in the staff, please? Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Cam, do we have correspondence?
Yes, Chairman. So for the record, we did mark into evidence the sunshine announcement as B1. And then we do have three items that are carried on the agenda. So the first item is under the adjournments category, and it is Item B under the adjournments. And they are actually carrying to a date uncertain, and they will have to renotice. So they are carrying to a date not certain, and they will be noticing again.
What case number is that?
That is Item B, Case P22-227. Address is 605 to 607 Grove Street.
Thank you.
So Cameron, that's just adjourned, and it'll be renoticed then when it's placed on a subsequent agenda.
Okay. So that is the first item. We have two more. Item 17 on the agenda, Case P2024-0060. This is a review and discussion of an amendment to the Powerhouse Arts District Redevelopment Plan. And this is being carried to our next regularly scheduled meeting. That is April 16th. And that's with preservation of notice. And then next and last, we have Item 19. It's P23-094. Address is 40 Lembeck. It's a preliminary and final major site plan. They have requested to carry with preservation of notice to April 16th. And that's our next regularly scheduled meeting. And that is all.
Okay. Thanks, Cam. All right. Let's get into old business then. Item A under old business is a Case P2024-0023. Is the second one-year extension for preliminary and final major site plan for 20 Carbon Place. Evening, counsel.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners, council staff. Michael, my name is Gerard Pizzillo. I'm an attorney with Genova Burns. I'm appearing this evening on behalf of the applicant, 20 Carbon Place Corp. LLC, excuse me, 20 Carbon Place Corp. Property is 20 Carbon Place, Block 22103, Lot 12. As you indicated, Chairman, we are requesting a second one-year extension of the preliminary and final major site plan with deviations that this board granted in 2020. That was for two 12-story buildings surrounded by an 8,000-square-foot public plaza. The property is located in Mid-Rise Zone B of the Culver Rule 440 redevelopment plan area, and governed by the provisions of that plan. The basis and the request for the reasoning we're asking for the second year, obviously, this case was involved, or this applicant was involved in some litigation with the, it's a joining landowner. That screwed up the timing in terms of moving forward. The lawsuit was resolved. As the lawsuit was resolving and in the process of resolution, my client, the landowner, obtained a new partner. They brought in a new design team. They did some value engineering. And we anticipate making revisions to the project. But we are asking to preserve the zoning and the prior approval, just in case something happens. But we anticipate coming before this board with a revised project very soon. But we are asking for the additional year, just to, as I said, preserve that zoning that's in place.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. And obviously, any staff comments, any conditions that were placed on record, carry through with the extensions?
Correct. And my client agrees to the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have questions?
No.
Okay. Is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application? Anyone from the public?
Mr. Chair, seeing no public, I move to close.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Public is closed. General, do you have a comment, questions, anything?
To comply with the conditions, you know, general approval, so staff room can approve.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Case P2024-0023 as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries. Are you in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Let's move on to under old business. Item B is Case P2024-0024. Is a preliminary and final major site plan. Three one-year extensions for 804 West Side Avenue.
Hi. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Veronica Schmeele of Connell Foley, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant for 804 to 810 West Side Avenue. I did actually notice for this, the underlying approval had C variances, so I would just like to ask if those could be marked for the record. And I have a hard copy with me as well. Sorry.
But I'll take the hard copy, please?
Yeah.
So again, gentle reminder to everybody, we're going to need those hard copies tonight, so I hope you brought them.
So we also have an extension this evening. The applicant is requesting three one-year extensions of its major site plan approval, which it obtained under P20-102. The original C variances were for rear yard, curb cut on West Side Avenue, and drive aisle width. And the approval was obtained March 22 of 2022, which was memorialized by resolution on April 5 of '22. So the protections afforded to that approval are set to expire on May 5 of this year. So the applicant is requesting three one-year extensions of that approval, taking us to 2027. The reasoning for it is, as I'm sure you guys have heard many times, there have been troubles with financing and obtaining permitting, and also this applicant is involved with some other development properties in Jersey City, which has tied up its time and financing. And to that end, we would request three one-year extensions.
So my question will be, why the three year, three one-year extensions rather than, we generally don't give three one-year extensions in one shot. It's usually a one-year extension at a time. So why the change? Why going for three?
As we discussed with the client, he thought that that would be the amount of time that he would need to be able to really turn his attention to this product, project. I do know he also has some personal situations. He had a member of his family that's now very ill, so he has requested that I request the additional three years to really get his ducks in a row with his other projects and be able to fully turn his attention to this one properly.
Okay. And obviously, same as the last application, any, you know, conditions on the record, any staff comments? They would all carry forward through all the extensions. Does anybody have any questions?
Chairman, for purposes of record, let's mark the notices A1. And then with respect to the request, we've gone over that we want to see progress and we want to see movement. So while I understand the applicant's request, I don't know that three years is appropriate. I think it should be a one-year extension, and they can always come back seeking additional extensions.
Agreed, counsel. And, you know, obviously, I empathize with your client. It's a tough situation. But legally, this board generally doesn't give more than a one-year extension in one night.
Understood.
So, yeah, we would, we would have one year on the table. So, anybody, any questions? Okay. Is there anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application? Anybody from public?
Mr. Chair, seeing no public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Cam, do you have anything you want to add?
I actually, if you don't mind giving me a minute, I need to confirm that, are we sure that it wasn't done as three? Because it was going to, it would expire? Like, we were acting retro, asking for retroactive extensions?
That was another one of my.
Oh, it was? Okay. Okay. All right. So.
For purposes of the record, Cam, we can make it retroactive in the event that there was any gap. But the extension will be from the memorializing resolution or the sunset date forward one year either today's meeting or if it had expired already.
This one was set to expire on April 5 of this year.
That will be one year from April 5.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So planning staff agrees the one-year extension to April 5 of 2025 with said conditions on the record. And staff recommends approval.
All right. Thank you, Cam.
Cam, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve Case P2024-0024 as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
For one year. Okay. Motion is made and seconded for a one-year extension.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor with conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. All right. Let's move on to new business. Item nine is Case P2024-0018. Is a Section 31 review for 921 Bergen Avenue.
Good evening, counsel, members of the board. My name is Mark Liebman. I'm with the firm of Kesa, Chehanian, and Gian Tomasi. I represent the applicant. I have three witnesses for you this evening. Without any further ado, I will jump right into it. I do actually have one statement that I told my client I was going to make. I told your attorney. I'm very familiar with this property. I started my practice of law in 1995 in this building with Peter Willis and John Young doing criminal defense work. I spent a lot of time in this building, so it's kind of cool for me to be here, to see a school going into this property. I think it's a really neat adaptive reuse of a really cool old building in Journal Square. And it's great to be back here in Jersey City. So with that, I'll call my first witness, Katie Hahn.
And counsel, for the record, this is a Section 31 review. It is for a school to go into an existing building on Bergen Avenue. So the board is very familiar with the Section 31 reviews. So just bear those comments in mind when moving the application.
We will keep this moving along quickly. I know you've got a busy night. I don't know if, counsel, you want to swear my witness or not, if it's your preference?
Mike?
I'll put that mic.
Good choice.
Cause a problem here.
Katherine, K-A-T-H-E-R-I-N-E, Hahn, H-A-H-N.
All right. Ms. Hahn, can you tell us what we're doing here? Why are you here?
Sure. I'm one of the co-founders and co-leaders of Kindle Education Public Charter School. We're a new charter school that launched in Jersey City on Communipaw Avenue this year with a sixth grade. And we are looking to move to this new facility in the fall so that we can expand our school. This will be a site for sixth through eighth grade, so a full middle school for us.
All right. Wonderful.
And counsel, just one second. So we're testifying, or I'm sorry, we're qualifying Ms. Hahn as a fact witness tonight, just for the board's notice. This isn't expert testimony. This is fact witness testimony.
How long have you been in the educational field?
I've been in education my whole career, about 15 years now. I previously worked with the New York City Department of Ed and left that position in 2020 to start this school. So we've been working on this project for quite a while, and we're really excited about this new location.
All right. And about how many students do you think you'll start with?
We'll start with 132 in this site next year in sixth and seventh grades, and we'll add our eighth grade the following year for just under 200 at full capacity.
Okay. And how did you come to choose this location?
One of the components of our schools, though, we're an intentionally diverse school community, which I know may seem obvious in Jersey City, but many schools around the country and even in New Jersey are quite segregated still. And so when we first founded our school, we were looking at Journal Square as an ideal location because of its central location and public transit as a place that we could really bring together students from different communities across Jersey City. We unfortunately weren't able to find a location to launch there this year, which is why we launched on Communipaw Avenue. So we're really excited to be potentially moving to Journal Square in the fall.
Wonderful. I have no further questions for this witness. I pass her to the board.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. I have no questions. Anybody else?
I, I do have a question. Yeah, about the students. You said it's seventh grade?
Next year, we'll have a sixth and seventh grade, and the following year, we'll add an eighth grade. So at capacity, this will be a site for a middle school, sixth to eighth grade.
And do you have any parking over there?
There are some neighboring lots with paid parking available, and that's what we would use. And we would also anticipate that the majority of our students will take public transportation as well as our staff. That's actually the case currently at our current site on Communipaw Avenue. As a middle school, a lot of students come to school by themselves, and there's even more access to public transit in Journal Square.
Okay.
I have a question. Are you going to be moving from Communipaw, sixth grade, to into that building?
Yes.
Okay.
And Ms. Hahn, is this servicing the local community? Is it open to the rest of the state?
So as a public charter school, in our charter, we give preference to students who live in Jersey City. So the vast majority of our students are Jersey City residents. We have a couple from Bayonne right now, which might change with the change in location.
Okay. Understood. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Appreciate it.
I'd like to call our project architect, Jason Chamura.
Chairman, we can have the witness sworn. I don't know how much the witness has to present in the fact that it is a retrofitting of 1,500, third and fourth floors to be a school. I think for our purposes, counsel, we're more concerned with the consistency with the master plan from.
So, thank you, Mr. Lampy. We'll get right to that. I just do want to put a little bit of testimony from the architect into the record. There was a comment in one of the review letters asking about signage, and our witness has prepared an exhibit to show a small sign that we want to present to the board and respond to.
Okay. Thank you.
That inquiry. Then we'll move right into our planning. I do agree, the architectural plan kind of speaks for itself.
Thank you, counsel.
I do. My name is Jason Chamura, J-A-S-O-N-C-H-M-U-R-A.
Good evening, sir. I don't believe we've qualified you in the past, have we?
No.
Okay. If you could, just go over your background, any licensing, and what state you're licensed in.
So I am a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, more than 10 years, 11. I am a partner at KSS Architects. Address is 163 West 23rd Street, New York City. Been with KSS Architects for 12 years, been practicing architect for almost 20 years now.
Okay. And your license is current tonight in New Jersey?
It is. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chamura, can you, I know you've got some plans up on the screen, but I want to get right to the exhibit that we're going to address that was raised in the review letter. If you could show us the Kindle sign.
Sure. Just for the sake of understanding where it is, this is an exhibit that was presented as part of the site plan application, so you should all be familiar with the ground floor plan. Newkirk is on the left side of this page here, and the proposed signage is on the corner of the building facing the alley that is off, directly off of Newkirk. This is a supplementary exhibit that we have prepared for tonight in response to one of the questions around compliance with the master plan.
Counsel, let's mark it as A1 for purposes of the record.
Thank you, Mr. Lampy.
As you'll see on the right side of this drawing, there is a proposed four foot by five foot, so 20-square-foot sign that is directly applied to the face of the building. This is proposed to be a painted metal sign that is essentially pin-mounted to the masonry. It is approximately six foot, about six and a half feet above grade as to prohibit tampering as best we can. And it's roughly centered between the existing window and the corner of the building closest to Newkirk Avenue. There are no lights or any moving graphics proposed as part of this. It's a standalone stationary sign.
Unless the board has any more questions for Mr. Chamura, I have nothing further.
Chairman, I think the floor plans speak for themselves as far as the use of the two floors as a school. If we want the witness to go through it again, it's a Section 31 review.
Yeah, agreed.
Agreed. I just wanted to make sure there's no more, there's no other exterior changes to the building. Everything is internal?
No, that's correct. Everything is internal to the building. There are no proposed changes to any existing entrances or sidewalk, or even the glazing windows or masonry above.
Okay. Excellent. Anybody? Any questions?
Chairman, I do have a question though because of the, I know that, yeah, my mic is on. Okay, I'll bring it down. The nature of the building, my question is, you're taking two floors in this building. How do you, the rest of the building is a rental building for office apartments. What's the rest of the building going to be renovated to?
My understanding is that there are various uses in the building. It's a mixed-use building, so.
A mixed-use building, still. Okay.
Ground floor has a former bank.
Yeah, okay.
There's a gym. Most, most of the building is actually office space.
Office space, yeah.
Above two, it's basically all office space. A lot of which is vacant right now.
What do you have to prevent students from traveling to different parts of the building?
So the, if I just call attention to the plans, just so when I speak about it, I'll go through this very quickly. But the students are proposed to enter the back of the building facing the alley between Newkirk and SIP. And that is an entrance that the landlord has dedicated to the school use.
Okay.
Then, they then utilize this stair that's easternmost or westernmost on the plan, which is again dedicated to the student or school use. On the upper floors, that stair on the west side of the plan is utilized to go between, essentially between the third and fourth floor, and it's limited to student use. On the other floors in the building, the landlord has proposed to install access control and device locks to prevent the students.
To prevent students from going. So people could come down the stairs, but the students won't be able to go up the stairs.
The students won't be able to access other floors. It is egress stairs, so they'll have to preserve that exit as usual.
Okay. That's what, that was my concern, being such a large building.
On that first floor, is there a door proposed to, you know, at the elevators to prevent kids from traveling through that hallway?
Not at this time. The lobby is common all the way out to Bergen.
Okay.
Similarly, the landlord has agreed to dedicate one elevator to the school for student use, and they're allowing the, the school to use a second elevator for freight and deliveries. But there's nothing necessarily separating that elevator from the rest of the lobby.
Okay. I was actually concerned about egress, just that they, they maintain those two forms of egress too for the kids.
Yeah, there, there is no proposal to change any of the current egress paths out of the building. There's three stairs within the building, all of which provide egress.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a question. What, what are you doing for the safety of the students when they come to the school?
Can you clarify in terms of traveling to the school or within the school?
Yeah, inside the school.
So, I mean, aside from having locks on the doors, which is pretty typical, we're proposing an elevator lobby at the third floor so that if there is someone who happens to get off the elevator that is not a teacher or someone that belongs in the school, that there's an extra level of security.
So there won't be metal detectors or a posted security guard?
I can't speak to that as the architect. That's more of an operational question for the school. I'm not sure.
I don't know the answer. We can call Ms. Hahn back up if you'd like to ask that question.
Can somebody answer that question?
Step aside, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. We'll have some controlled access, as Jason mentioned. So stairwells, there won't just be key cars going to the other floors, but also to get onto our floor, preventing any external, you know, potential intruders from coming on. And then the locked elevator lobby, which will be released by a maglock, that will be controlled in the main office. So there will be controlled access in that sense. And then we'll have security cameras throughout that are always visible from the main office, which is where our staff will be monitoring them and monitoring the comings and goings of guests. We also plan to have a kind of guest sign-in station in the lobby with video that goes straight to our main office so that we are aware of any guests who are coming up. They're given a visitor tag before they even access our floors.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Anybody else? Any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Call Sam Bellamy, our professional planner.
Good evening. I do. Sure. Samuel Bellamy, last name B-E-L-L-A-M-Y.
Mr. Bellamy, good evening. Good to see you in person.
Good evening, yeah.
This is the first time, yeah. So we've obviously qualified you in the past. Your license is still current?
Yep, current and in good standing.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Sure. So getting into my review, Dresner Robin did prepare his own inconsistency, consistency review memorandum. That does identify both the consistency with the master plan and also the redevelopment plan, which, when adopted and since amended, was also consistent with the, with the master plan. So as far as the Section 1 review, again, we are a public charter school use, so that does fall under that criteria for, for your consideration for consistency with the master plan. I am going to highlight some of the, those elements that we did identify within our report. So the property is located within Zone 6, the preservation zone of the Journal Square redevelopment plan. Generally, that zone is, the purpose is to preserve historic buildings that define the Journal Square area. So I think with this adaptive reuse project, again, utilizing two floors within the existing building, we are further advancing that purpose of the intent of the Zone 6 of the plan. We're also consistent with several of the objectives of the plan. Objective one is to reestablish Journal Square as the primary central business district. Again, we're providing a charter school use. It's generally consistent with the mix of uses in the surrounding area. I think that will continue to contribute to the overall diversity of uses within the Journal Square area. We're also consistent with objective nine, which is to encourage the adaptive reuse of existing structures. Again, we're not proposing any changes, bulk changes to the building. It's just adaptively reusing the former office floors for the public charter school use. We're further consistent with objective 14, which is to provide conservation and preservation of select structures with historic significance. Again, providing for adaptive reuse. So again, I think we're doing that with this proposed project, reutilizing the historic office floors within the building. Further, we're providing for an education use within the Journal Square area. Again, that's overall consistent with the general surrounding area, and will continue to contribute to the activation of, of the area. With respect to the master plan, we are. we are consistent with several of the principles of the plan, which is to provide flexibility that allows for adaptive reuse of office spaces. So again, that's what we're doing with this proposed project. But I think most importantly, we're upgrading community facilities and infrastructure to accommodate population growth and adjust changing needs. So with this project, you heard from our representative of the school, we're going to add a school use that provides for child, for education services for students in the local area. We did also review the historic preservation elements of the plan. This location isn't identified in the 2015 historic preservation plan. Those plans do speak to the general historic buildings within the Journal Square area, which again, I think we're, we are promoting the purpose of the Zone 6 preservation. Within the new 2024, the draft historic preservation element, it does identify this property as being eligible for the, for local designation. So again, I don't think the project's doing anything to stray away from that. I think we're not making any changes with respect to the outside of the building. Overall, we also permitted use within the plan, again, consistent with the surrounding area. We're not proposing any bulk changes, so there's no, there's no non-compliance with the bulk criteria. We are adding outdoor bicycle spaces to contribute to the school use. But with respect to loading, it's going to continue to operate the same way that it does for the office uses. So overall, I think the project is consistent with the master plan and also the redevelopment plan. I'd be happy to go over anything the board has.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bellamy. I don't know if this question is appropriate now or not, just given that you brought up the historic aspect. Has historic preservation seen the sign that was presented tonight that you're aware of?
I'm not aware. I think we did submit.
I'm not aware either, but the review letter we have says that all the proposed signage has to be reviewed by the HPC before purchase, manufacture, and installation. So we intend to comply with that suggestion and hopefully they're okay with it. It's not even going to be visible from a street. You'd have to be, there used to be a parking lot when I used to work at that building. I think it's a park now. So I'm hoping there's no problems with that.
Okay, understood. Yeah, that's it for me, Mr. Bellamy. Anybody else?
That's it.
Okay.
I kind of want to go back to the security part. I don't know, in light of all the shooting, I think you just said like there's cameras. I'm talking about someone being posted and then I'm talking about metal detectors for people coming in and out of the building for, unfortunately, including the children that's coming in. No one never like considered like having metal detectors or having a posted security guard? Because if an incident happened, okay, we got it on camera, but we don't have a physical body acting.
Right, no, I understand, Commissioner, what the concern is. And I'll let my witness respond to it in a moment. But I'll just note that as part of a Chapter 31 review, that's really kind of beyond the purview of what the board is here to decide.
Okay.
You know, the primary concern here is, are we generally consistent with your master plan and your housing plan? Does the board have any suggestions that may make a better plan? And that's why I think the comment is somewhat appropriate to be directed there. I think the bank is still active at this site and I would presume that the bank has armed security protecting it as an extra measure of security. But I'll let my witness answer your question.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not contemplating metal detectors at this time. There has been a lot of research about the added anxiety that that causes students. And that's just not the kind of environment that we want to create in our school. But we have considered in the budget for later years as we grow and can support more operational overhead and the addition of a security guard. And then I also just wanted to clarify that by controlled access, we don't just mean that there will be cameras, but there's actual, you need key card access to get into the building, of course. Anyone who's already on staff would have that, so it doesn't prevent against a known intruder, I suppose. But in terms of an outside person, including a student, they won't have key card access. They would need to be buzzed in by an adult.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, counsel. No other questions, anybody? Okay, at this time, let's open it up for public comment. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application? Anybody from public?
Mr. Chair, signal public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, public is closed. Cam, anything you want to add?
Yeah, so just two formalities. I'm going to have to mark into evidence the historic preservation memo dated March 18th and then mark into evidence the planning staff memo dated March 18th as well.
Cam, the historic preservation and staff memo are on the portal.
Correct, yes.
Do we need to mark them, Santo?
We can.
Okay, and then I'm just going to ask that the applicant's attorney agree to those conditions stated in those reports?
Yes.
Okay, planning staff recommends approval with the conditions stated in the report. And actually specifically, it is staff recommends approval for voting in favor of comporting with the master plan. Yes.
Yes, that's right, Cam. It's actually not an approval. It is a determination of whether or not the plan as proposed is consistent with the master plan and the redevelopment plan in which the property sits. So I find that the question of Ms. Green is appropriate. I think it's something that everybody should be considering at all times. Safety of the children is very important to all of us. But from this body's standpoint, the question is whether or not the application as presented is consistent with the master plan. And if it is not consistent with the master plan, what recommendations does the body have that would make it more consistent with the master plan?
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept case P2024-0018 as presented to us today as being consistent with the master plan.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded.
Okay, Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Aye, I just want to make a quick comment. I'm happy to see that this space is being used as, utilized as a school. It's more choices for students and parents as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
And Chairman Langson.
Counsel, I do want to share with you, I believe that was the first building I ever worked as a union sprinkler fitter as well. It's a nasty basement down there. I'm sure you weren't down there.
Back when Siggy used to own the building and he'd walk around and collect the rent from all the tenants.
Yes, that was the place. So yeah, I have a little history there myself, so.
Very cool.
I do vote aye and it is consistent with the master plan and redevelopment plan, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, counsel. We did submit a resolution for the board's consideration if we could get that executed because we need to get that off to the State Department of Education as soon as possible to get the wheels moving.
Okay, and I can't guarantee that right now, but Santo will look at it as soon as he possibly can.
Wonderful, have a great night.
All right, thank you, counsel, you too.
Thank you, motion carries all in favor.
All right, thanks, Cam. So let's move on to item 10, is case P2024-0043. Is a Section 31 review for University Academy Charter High School.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Board. Christopher Buggy, on behalf of applicant University Academy Charter High School. I have two witnesses this evening, representative from the school and project architect. I'll call Mr. Lugo, the representative of the school, first.
Yes. Hi, my name is Eri Lugo, E-R-I-E, last name Lugo, L-U-G-O.
All right, Mr. Lugo, just tell us a little bit about yourself. Where do you work, what do you do?
Sure, I'm the lead person for University Academy Charter High School. I've been here since 2005. The school opened in 2002. Probably my 26th year in education now.
And what is the school seeking to do with this application?
So we are seeking to build a STEAM center, science, technology, education, agriculture, and math with physics lab, biology lab, chemistry lab, technology lab, a laundry room for students that need it, gender neutral bathrooms. We're going to have a new egress to make sure that we can get the students out safely from the second floor level. And we look forward to having service learning projects where we actually grow leafy vegetables that we would be able to push back out into the community.
And approximately how many students attend?
432 students. We are approved for 460.
And how long have you been operating at that location?
Since 2002, we started in NJCU and then we moved, 2002, let's say.
Okay, thanks. I don't know if the board has any questions, Mr. Lugo?
I have nothing, anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir. This is the first STEAM project I've ever heard. Never heard that.
Yeah, we want to rival NJIT.
I love it, I love it, okay.
Next, I'll call the project architect, Matthew McChesney.
I do. Sure, it's Matthew, M-A-T-T-H-E-W. And my last name is McChesney, it's M-C-C-H-E-S-N-E-Y.
Mr. McChesney, good evening. I believe we've qualified you in the past, have we?
I've been before you for Section 31 review, so I believe I was qualified, yes.
Okay, and your license is current tonight in the state of New Jersey? Okay, thank you, you're qualified again.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Matt, if you could just take us through the project?
Sure, I have the.
Yeah, if you want. Counsel, do you have a planner with you tonight?
No, just the architect and just the representative from the school.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything that needs to be done to share the screen?
Cam? Do you want to share the screen?
Oh. Okay, perfect. Whoops. Okay, thank you. So I'm going to walk through the project quickly. Quick overview, the property is located at 275 West Side Avenue in between, it's located between Carbon Place and Fisk Street. Zooming in a little bit on the building itself. Essentially, all of the work is going to happen within the building. The only things that will happen outside of the current building is we're adding the new stair tower, stair addition in the back of the building. So this view is looking at the backside of the building. And then the only other thing that could potentially be visible on the exterior are some exhaust fans because of the fume hoods associated with the science labs. The property is located within the West Side, the West Side redevelopment plan, which is, and as you can see on the slide, it's within this blue section, which is the permitted use there is colleges, universities, and schools. The former, the area that the school is taking over was previously NJCU space and is now being moved from that higher ed use to a K through 12 use. And the building is consistent with the requirements of the redevelopment plan. It's a school use in this traditionally mixed use neighborhood. The expansion of the school's programming is key to its success in this location. The stair tower addition is on the backside of the building. It doesn't impact the pedestrian environment. And also, the stair tower is going to be consistent with, aesthetically consistent with the rest of the building. And I'll touch on that in a minute. Looking at the floor plans, the ground floor, there's no, this is the ground floor, there's no change other than the construction of this stair tower in the back corner here. And on the second floor, we're renovating basically the, what appears to be kind of the right-hand side of the plan, this white area. Again, currently, this is, it was formerly like a business incubator space, so there's some smaller office spaces and then a large open area that used to be used kind of as a coworking space. The building, what we're doing is renovating that space into new science labs. There's going to be a biology lab, a chemistry lab, and a physics lab. We're also adding a music room, a computer technology room. And then in the center of the space is an area for, it's kind of a maker space where students can create things. There's a big, there's a lot of students who are interested in fashion, so they're going to have some sewing machines for things like that and other kinds of things that spur student interest and project-based learning. And here's some quick, quick elevation of the stair addition. It's going to be clad in metal siding, which is similar to some of the other components of the building. And the majority of the building is a brick facade. So you can see the new stair addition here. And then on the next slide, whoops, well, these are the planning drawings. These are just zooms in of that. So it's going to cover up this one section of brick facade that's on the back of the building where the new stair will be located. And then there'll be an exterior exit for students to get out of the building in emergency. The area of renovation is about just under 10,000 square feet. And the stair tower is only 238 square feet, so it's very, very small compared to the rest of the building. The footprint of the building is a little over 30,000 square feet. And that's the presentation.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions, anybody? Okay, Matt, I actually do have a question since the applicant doesn't have a planner here. So obviously, schools are an applicable use in the redevelopment plan. I'm concerned about the exhaust hoods.
The exhaust hoods?
Yes, so for the science labs, there's, what's exhausted through those hoods?
It's, so the, yeah.
So basically, in chemistry, you have chemicals. There are special storage cabinets. Some chemicals can't be combined, they have to be stored separately. And so we may have a hot plate where we're heating up something and just making sure that all those fumes, everything you're working on is going up that vent.
Okay, and what controls what goes out into the environment? That's just an exhaust vent that blows out into the neighborhood?
Right, so we're not, we're not talking chemicals that you have to worry about.
In theory, but accidents do happen.
Certainly, everything we do have in there gets reported to, oh, I'm sorry.
Department of Education?
No, no. The yearly right-to-know survey, right? So we go through all the chemicals that we use are all inventoried. And so it's not anything that we have to worry that we use in something that our teachers can't use. I don't know how else to answer the question.
Okay. Have you ever read one of those right-to-know surveys?
I submit it, I submit it every year. And so now we actually have software that it all goes into and then I take that data and I put it into the right-to-know. And you have to enter all the numbers and, you know, so everything is all catalogued. We've had one visit. Currently, what we do is we actually are on New Jersey City University campus and we use their chemistry lab.
Okay.
Costs us about $50,000 a year, so we're ready to steer away from that and have our own lab.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it would, it would be consistent with what happens at other high schools. We're dropping in residential neighborhoods as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I guess there's a question, maybe a comment too, so, in the same realm of what the chairman is speaking about. Since this is in line with my trade and working in a lab at another college, you were going to have an acid waste type of piping system or a neutralizing waste system set in progress that once everything is neutralized, then it goes HU-D?
Yes, so all of the sinks in the science labs have acid-neutralizing. Yes, so all of the sinks in the science labs have acid-neutralizing tanks. So anything that goes down the drain goes through that tank.
Because should that tank is prepared, then it goes before it goes into any of the sewage or...
Yes, yeah. And it all happens locally at the sink. We don't even have, some schools have a central system. This is locally at the sink, so...
So even if there's a combined sewer in that area, it won't affect anything outside in the environment out of that school?
Correct. It's neutralized as soon as it leaves that slide, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you, sir. Counsel, is that your presentation?
Yes, that concludes, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application? Anyone here from the public?
See no public, I move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Matt, do you have anything you want to add?
Not too much, Chairman. Staff reviewed the materials provided by the applicant for this section thirty-one review and found it, to recommend it as broadly consistent with the master plan and the West Side redevelopment plan. Staff didn't find any need to scrutinize the specifics of the educational uses as K through twelve, primary, secondary education is an as-of-right use in the West Side redevelopment plan. It's, you know, this is a mixed-use residential-commercial community, moving away from what was traditionally light and medium industrial uses over here. And schools, especially primary and secondary schools, naturally anchor such communities. Staff recommends accepting this as consistent with the master plan, not approval.
All right, thanks, Matt.
Mr. Plan, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept case P two zero two four dash zero zero four three as consistent with the master plan and the West Side redevelopment plan.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Dr. Desai? Commissioner, Dr. Desai? Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
Great addition to the school. Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Great addition. I think it's well needed to take it out of the college into the school and see these schools grow that way. It's a great thing. I vote aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Aye. Good luck, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item eleven is case P two zero two three dash zero zero three four is a minor site plan for seventeen Berkeley Place. Counsel, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Good to see everybody in person. It's been a long couple of years, but nice to see everybody. I know I seem taller on Zoom. For the record...
Well, we saw you two weeks ago at the Jerran meeting.
He's same size.
For the record, Benjamin Wine of Primate Uvell on behalf of the applicant seventeen nineteen Berkeley LLC. Just before I launch into my presentation, I will note that this application is a minor site plan, and under the statute, notice is technically not required. However, we did go ahead and file notice anyways. So with that, I believe Mr. Alampi would like a copy.
Thank you, Counsel. Chairman, Counsel is correct. It is not required under the MLUL, however, since Mr. Wine was kind enough to do it, I will be kind enough to review it and mark it for purposes of the record.
All right, thank you, Counsel. So I assume that will be A one. So just a brief introduction.
Will be A one, Cam.
The application is for seventeen and nineteen Berkeley Place, which is located at block seven eight zero eight, lots two and three, and we are within the R one zoning zone. I do want to indicate that the property currently consists of what is now vacant land and is located just in the enclave just north of Journal Square, just for orientation purposes. The neighborhood is surrounded largely by residential uses of varying sizes and densities, and what we're proposing here this evening is to take advantage of the affordable housing overlay, which provides for no-density maximum, but we are providing one-three-bedroom affordable unit as part of our project, consistent with the division of affordable housing. And then also, under your new R one ordinance, I believe this may actually be the first one that you're seeing, to propose an accessory dwelling unit at the rear of the property. So the substance of the project in particular is for eleven residential dwelling units located within the principal building, and again, one of those will be a three-bedroom affordable unit dedicated per your ordinance and under the affordable housing requirements, and then one accessory dwelling unit in the rear of the property for a total of twelve units on the property. We also do recognize that, given that your affordable housing requirement is ten percent, it would be of the eleven principal units, is my understanding, the one would be provided on-site, and then the point one, as discussed with city planning and the division of affordable housing, would be likely a payment in lieu, again, to that division of affordable housing at a rate of, I believe it's eighteen thousand dollar payment. With that, our application is free of any variances. I will indicate that we actually do have our project planner here as well this evening. I don't intend to call him. That's Sam Bellamy, in case he sounds familiar. Originally, when we filed this application, it was under your old R one requirements. It actually did not have the accessory dwelling unit at the time, but under the old R one, the height calculation was, I think I can say it now that you've adopted a revision, a little bit wonky, and it was based on floor-to-floor heights, but also based on topography, and it was impossible to comply with what the requirement would have been. But now that the requirement is a flat thirty-five feet, we are under that requirement, as we always were. So we don't have any variances, but since Mr. Bellamy was going to be here this evening anyways, I did ask him to stick around just in case any questions do come up. So with that, Chairman, unless there are any questions, and me, I intend to call one witness here this evening. That's our project architect, Tom Mesuk.
Okay, thank you, Counsel.
It's not an HDMI. So you want to get the project board, the boards?
We have dongles available, so we can find the appropriate.
You guys thought of everything.
It's an older... I unfortunately didn't grab my newer one this morning.
Oh, I see, I see.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
This one looks like a regular, is there a US?
Oh, I see, I see.
Mike, this counts as your five-minute break, right?
Yeah.
Just a regular, you know, monitor.
If we don't have it, we can show the, we have physical boards.
You need help, Mr. Wine?
We do have physical boards, so we can go ahead and present through those.
So, Mr. Wine, while we're sitting around, even though he's going to run, the only reason you're before this board is because you're more than five thousand square feet.
That is correct.
Otherwise, if it was under five thousand square feet, you'd be able to administratively pull permits from the building department. But because we are in excess of five thousand square feet, the minor site plan is what's triggered, and there's no variances being sought in connection with the application. So it's simply because of that reason. Is that accurate?
That is an accurate statement. And for the record, the plans that you will see here this evening were submitted to the board more than ten days in advance, so nothing should be new and exciting. Tom will get you sworn in.
I'm not comfortable. I do. Thomas Mesuk, T.H.O.M.A.S., M.E.S.U.K.
I'm sorry, my mic is off. Mr. Mesuk, good evening. We've qualified you in the past, I believe, right?
Yes.
Your license is current tonight?
It is.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Good evening.
All right, so Tom, if you can go ahead and briefly walk the board through the existing conditions and what we're proposing here this evening.
Apologies on the technology issues we had this morning, or this afternoon, rather. So, as Ben stated, you were looking to do an eleven-unit building, three-story unit, three-story building with the affordable housing overlay and the accessory dwelling unit. Our building, our main building is situated towards the front of the property, and in the rear of the property, consistent with the zoning ordinance, we have the accessory dwelling unit. I'll take you through the architecture of the project. Okay, so for our basement, because, and just to go back to the site real quick, the site is very sloped from Berkeley Avenue towards the back of the site. So with that in mind, and we believe there may be some rock on the back end of the site, we've kept our basement primarily towards the front of the building and a little bit smaller just to avoid any of the rock that may be towards the back of the site. Our basement is generally for mechanicals, a little bit of storage, and a garbage room for trash and recycling. First floor, we have our main entry facing Berkeley. We do have an ADA lift for ADA accessibility to the first floor, and we have three units on the first floor. Right side, left side, we have a one-bedroom on the right side of the plan and a two-bedroom on the left. In the back of the unit, we have our three-bedroom, and that would be considered the affordable housing unit. All units do have washers and dryers. All first-floor units can be made adaptable for ADA use if necessary. We also have a bicycle storage room on the first floor, a smaller trash room for ADA access because you wouldn't be able to access the basement, and essentially lies located stair tower. Also, because of the topography, the existing topography on site, the back of the building is actually set in the ground, so we do have window wells at the back of the building for light and egress, emergency egress out of the back unit. Our second and third floors are the identical...
But now you're on sheet A two.
On A two, correct.
I'm just, there might be people following along on their digital...
Sheet A two, we have our second and third floors, which are identical layout on both floors. Each floor consists of four units. Each unit on the second and third floor are one-bedroom units. Our roof, we have access to two roof decks with five hundred and twelve square feet of green space and then centralized mechanical area, so that that's a little bit hidden from street view. Each unit will have individual control. The HVAC units are relatively small for like a mini-split system. Moving on to A three. A three shows our floor plans that we're proposing for our accessory dwelling unit in the back. First floor be primarily living space. We do have a one-bedroom on the ground floor, a mechanical space and a half-bath. On the second floor, we have three bedrooms upstairs, and each bedroom has an en suite bath. The roof here would just be for mechanical purposes and nothing else. And our elevations for the accessory dwelling unit. The materials for the front of the accessory dwelling unit will match the unit, the main building, and I will get into the materials shortly. We do have a railing on top of the accessory dwelling unit, just primarily for safety, for any maintenance or, you know, anything else that needs to happen on the roof, but don't anticipate anything. The rear of the building, there's no windows because it is on the rear property line, and, you know, all our bedrooms do face, you know, the opposite building. So our building height is under the eighteen-foot requirement from grade to the top of the roof structure. Going on to drawing A seven. Drawing A seven is the elevations of the primary building. The upper-left, the front elevation, is the main elevation facing Berkeley Avenue. So we do have primarily a brick facade with some cement board siding to break up that facade with a canopy that extends over our stairs. The only technical signage would be the address on the front of the canopy. The other sides of the building have the windows that we need for our unit, and they are in compliance with the construction code for, like, our closeness to our lot lines. Going back to materials just for a moment. So on drawing A point zero two, we show our materials. So for our brick on the front facades of both buildings, we'll have a building brick. It's called Alaska White Velour. And then our siding, primarily on the sides of the building, would be the James Hardy Arctic White. And then the front of the building, the grays would be, the lighter gray is Gray Slate by James Hardy, and the darker gray is Iron Gray, also by James Hardy. Our numbers on the front of the canopy would just be a pin letter finished in brush nickel. That's primarily it on the architectural. I'll touch a little bit upon the engineering because our engineer could not be here tonight. Also, these plans are also submitted in part of everybody's, you know, package. So on engineering drawing C three zero two, this outlines our drainage that has been designed for the site. The drainage, we are detaining water on the site as opposed to just letting it run off as it did in the past and currently does. So the engineer has calculated out what the requirements are in terms of the detention, and we have provided that underneath our sidewalk. In terms of lighting... It's not that one. I think it's one or two more. Okay, so on sheet C dash one zero two, the lights are shown with the spillage. You can see that all of our lighting stays mostly in the site, a little bit, there's a little bit of spill over on the right-hand side. Actually, no, I'm sorry, the lot line is out here. So all of our lighting does stay on in the site. In terms of landscaping, I'm going to go back to our first sheet. In terms of landscaping, we do provide two street trees, and everything shown in green would be green space. The beige would be the sidewalk areas. So we do have a little bit of green space throughout the site. That's primarily everything that we have.
Yeah, Tom, I just had one follow-up question for you. I know since, you know, these ADUs or accessory dwelling units are a relatively new feature per the ordinance, you did confirm that the separation between the principal building and the accessory building, as well as the egress path to the accessory building, are compliant with all building codes?
Yes, they're all compliant.
Okay. All right, bro, I just wanted to put that out there. I know this board has not really seen these as of yet. But Chairman and Commissioners, that really concludes my examination of Mr. Mesuk. As I've indicated, our planner is here. Not that I think he's relevant at this point, but he is available.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Mr. Mesuk, I do have one question.
Sure.
On the accessory dwelling unit... On the accessory dwelling unit, there's a steel railing around the top. What's actually located on the top that would need-
Just the mechanical unit and, you know, a couple of internal roof drains-
Okay.
To get the water off. So we put the railing up there primarily as a safety feature in case somebody has to go up there, work on the mechanical system. There's no direct access. We do have just a roof hatch, so it's not like people would be up there on a regular basis, but we did put the rail on for just the safety of any worker that may have to go up there.
Okay, I'm all about safety. Where is the roof hatch?
Okay, the roof hatch is on the second floor. If you look at the plan on sheet A3, lower left-hand corner is the second floor plan. Our roof hatch is behind the stairs to access the second floor, in between like the closet and the stair.
Okay, yeah, I see, thank you. Okay, anybody, any other questions?
The, I do, I have a question on this accessory building that we have. So that's a three-bedroom unit, or?
It actually has four bedrooms. We have a ground floor bedroom, and there's three bedrooms on the second.
On the accessory unit.
On the accessory dwelling unit, correct.
And to, and to, into that unit, it's separate from- Okay, I got confused with this one for a minute. I don't know why. I'm looking at it and I'm like, son, I'm not, I'm not seeing. Is it part of the principal building?
It's not part, it's separated.
Separated, is what you're saying, right?
It is separated in the back, yes.
The back, okay.
Right, there are, I believe there's 10 feet between-
So the only thing I would like to see if there's a, if we could put a condition that out of no circumstances, that winds up being a affordable housing unit, right? Because then you're separating the affordable, one of affordable housing from the people in the other building.
Correct, and Commissioner, that's a, that's a great point. I will just indicate, if I didn't do this before, with the Division of Affordable Housing, they actually had a similar request or condition that the three-bedroom in the principal building is designated as the affordable unit.
Yes, I know, you stated that too. He stated that that's gonna be the affordable housing one, but I'm just saying, in the future, if we can have something down where the building that is not attached to the other building is never, would, would never become changed into an affordable housing unit for, unless they want to do that as an additive. I mean, if they want to have two.
They cannot replace the unit in the main structure and substitute it with this unit in terms of affordable.
Okay, that's what I-
So there'll be a restriction with respect to the three-bedroom in the principal building, dedicating it as the affordable unit in connection with the project.
Okay, that's what I wanted to be clear.
That's correct. I believe it will be a deed restriction as well. I think that's how it's done.
So, yeah, I guess to clarify and process, Commissioner Torres, within the affordable housing agreement, which is a, a staff's recommended resolution requirement here, between the Division of Affordable Housing and the applicant, it would specify exactly which unit in the building is the deed restricted affordable unit. There's no moving things around, there's no, there's no, there's no bait and switch or substitution.
That's do we get a CEO and then the building two, five years from now will still be-
It'll be a condition of the resolution that the three-bedroom unit in the principal-
That's what I'm worried about, five years from now, 10 years from now, not right now.
Right, so the resolution's gonna require, as will the affordable housing, and the applicant has agreed to it and is going to have to be bound by it, there's gonna be a deed restriction. So it's going to be recorded in the county registrars that this particular unit, which, I don't know if we have a actual-
There's a unit number, I believe it's unit 3 on the first floor.
Okay, so the three-bedroom on the ground floor of the principal building will be the affordable unit with the deed restriction, and only eligible to those people that qualify based on the affordable housing guidelines and rules.
That's what I'm looking for.
And to be clear as well, that's also, whether this is a rental or a, or condo units, that, that restriction goes into effect, I believe it's for 30 years.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just basically, my thought is that, okay, down the line, we don't like the tenant that's affordable. We don't, we, we-
Understood.
Let's put him outside now because this is the first time I see an outside building that's attached to the same building. Now I have somewhere I can send that person to because we don't want him on the same floor as us, you know, that type of thing. So to a, that's what's concerned me the most on this project.
Understood.
That's all.
Just to clarify, it is unit 1 on the ground floor.
Okay, it's been denoted as unit 1.
Correct.
Thank you.
And that's on drawing A1 for reference.
Eddie, I think the outside unit's the best one in the whole country, to be honest with you.
Yeah, it was actually, it's a pretty cool unit.
So Counsel and Mr. Mesuk, the only condition that I usually put on an affordable unit that's in a building is that it's built with the same fit and finish as the rest of the units in the building.
Right.
There's no difference in material, no difference in ceiling heights.
Right, oh, it's exactly the same.
Exactly the same as the rest of the units, okay.
It has the same amenities. Every unit does have a washer dryer. Obviously, the, the kitchen facilities are all the same in all the units.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Counsel, I don't know that, I assume it's Mr. Bellamy is your planner tonight. I don't know that we need his testimony right now. Maybe we'll reserve that right if a question comes up, if that's okay.
Sure.
And that's your presentation?
So with that, I'll certainly reserve my right to sum up, but that would conclude my direct examination.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, come on up to the microphone.
Mr. Chair, I see no public. I'll move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Mr. Wine, do you want to have a closing statement?
Sure, the only thing I would add is, and I should have indicated in this at the beginning, I did receive Mr. DeSilva's staff report. I do take no exception to any of the conditions that he indicates therein, and we're happy to comply therewith. I thank the board for the opportunity and respectfully request that this site plan application be granted as presented.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, let's get Matt's comments.
As Mr. Wine mentioned, yes, staff report was submitted to the board dated 3/18/2024, substantiating the applicant's assertion that this is indeed an as-of-right application, compliant with all provisions of the R1 zoning, the affordable housing overlay, and the accessory dwelling unit provision. Staff recommends several conditions, including, and I just want to highlight that those, among those conditions are, per the requirements of the affordable housing overlay, the applicant shall agree to comply with Chapter 188 of the Mistful Code and coordinate as necessary with the Division of Affordable Housing to obtain a fully executed and recorded affordable housing agreement and, and related approvals and agreements, which would include recording a deed restriction prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or temporary certificate of occupancy. So with that, that's all I have to add to this.
Excellent, thank you Matt.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P 2023-0034 as presented to our board tonight.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dr. DeSai?
Aye.
Commissioner Green?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Gangadin?
I'm happy to see that there is an affordable unit here, and it's a three-bedroom as well. Aye.
Commissioner Torres?
Aye.
And Chairman Langston?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Gangadin. It's always nice to see a larger unit as the affordable unit. I'm excited about the accessory dwelling unit. I think it's, you know, it's a big step forward for the city, and I'm happy to see the first one in front of us tonight. So it's definitely an eye for me.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you in two weeks. All right, Mike, you want to get a break in? Perfect time. All right, let's take a 10-minute break, everybody. It's 6:55. We'll be back at 7:05.
Okay, and just as an announcement, Forty Lembeck has been carried to April 16th, if you're here for that case. And if you're here for the PADNA amendment to nightclubs, that is April 16th. Okay.